Sorry for the technical issues.
Yes.
Okay.
I see this on YouTube.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Yeah, we're rolling.
Oh, okay. So we're good?
Yep.
He said yes.
Yes, okay, we're good. Okay, so, once again, on behalf of all the board and the college, those that are joining us live, our apologies, we're fifteen minutes late, you're getting started. We'll work out the kinks for our next meeting and be prompt. So, thank you very much for your patience. So, the meeting will come to order. Robin, just for the record of the attendance, there's a hundred percent participation today. For those of you that are joining us online, Randy Richardson is participating in the meeting by Zoom. So, the first up on the agenda is citizen comments. Robin, do we have any citizen?
No, no citizen comments received.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on now to the consent agenda, and just to make sure everybody's clear about the consent agenda, there's six items on the consent agenda, and if there's any of these that the board would like pulled off to discuss under whole business, you know, let me know, please. The first is the approval of the minutes, second is personnel actions, third is the actual copier equipment contract, and then Resolution 20, which is the air fund borrowing, and Resolution 5, which is an increase of appropriation, and then six is the second reading of the policy. So, are there any, is there any concern about any of those? Would somebody like any of that pulled up? Or are we okay with the?
Steve, this is Randy. I would like to throw it out there, we pulled the copier equipment lease to maintenance contract from the consent agenda and discussed a little further, just, you know, given our current financial uncertainty with everything, it just seems that it would be nice to have a little more discussion before signing such a large contract.
We'll do it. So, we'll pull the, we'll pull the copier contract, the actual contract itself, and we'll include that under whole business B. Is there anything else on the consent agenda? Okay, so, seeing no other concerns, the consent agenda stands approved as it's read. So, changes to the agenda, let's see, there's like two changes to the agenda with the board's approval. One is we'll move Cam Croix's, the OCCA Executive Director update, we'll move that to the top of the agenda. The other change is before Cam gets a chance, I've got just a short little statement to read here, so, about the evaluation of our president, we just did in executive session. So, are there any objections to the changing our agenda a little bit there?
No.
Okay, so, for people that are, you know, joining us online, we met in executive session prior to the start of the meeting, and one of the items that we covered in the executive session was we did the annual evaluation of our president. And so, on behalf of the Umpqua Community College Board of Education, it is my pleasure to announce that our evaluation of President Deborah Thatcher has resulted in her fourth outstanding performance review. We evaluated the president in seven areas, including leadership and strategic direction, educational outcomes, board relations, financial management, staff management supervision, community relations, and decision-making and governance. The board is very appreciative of Dr. Thatcher, and we look forward to her continued service to our community and college. Now, as most of you know, Dr. Thatcher announced her plan to retire July 1st of 2021. The board has appointed a three-person committee that will begin planning how we will look for replacement. I will be joined by Guy Pennerly and David O'John as we begin the process. And then, just a short word about the process, the three of us plan to develop a master plan timeline and bring it back to the board, and we'll consider it in the executive session at our August retreat. And at that time, we'll be prepared to present to the public what our plan is for how we go about to hire our college president. So, with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Cam Croix, the OCCA Director, the Oregon Community College Association Director, who's joined us tonight for a report on the association. So, Cam, the floor's yours.
Thank you so much. Thank you Chair Luzy, and thank you Doris, again, for that very gracious introduction. I'm really sorry that I can't do this in person, but I guess this is second best. It's one of the favorite parts of the job as far as I'm concerned, and that's getting on the local college campuses and having a chance to put names with faces, and to thank you so much for your service to Oregon's community colleges, and in your case particularly to Umpqua Community College, your community, and of course, your students. So, thanks very much, thanks for the time. This is really my time to just take a few minutes to talk about the state of Oregon's community colleges. When I was the Director of the Department of Community Colleges and Workforce Development, I had a practice of getting around at least once a year to all seventeen colleges. It doesn't sound like it would be hard, but trust me, there are at least three or four colleges that meet on exactly the same date you do, and then there's, oh, let's see, Wednesdays are a very popular day, Thursdays are a very popular day, the second week of the month, and the third week of the month. So, it's quite a, it's quite, it's quite a scheduling dilemma to figure out where to go. And then you have to think about the weather, but now that, now that everything is on Zoom, it's easier to schedule and easier to arrive, but it's not as satisfactory, at least it's not for me. As Doris said, I've been the Executive Director of the association since November 1st of 18, so not yet two years. I decided that I should apply for that job, even though I was really very happy as a college president, I really enjoyed my time at New Mountain, but I felt like I could have some special skill and knowledge that I could bring to the association, and I'm pleased that my colleagues as presidents and board members feel like it's made a bit of a difference. I would like to thank Doris LeTrop for her service on your behalf as the OCCA representative. She certainly represents your interests on the OCCA board. Those of you who don't know, there's two members of each college that serves on the board, so there are thirty-four members of the board I work for, but together they only have one vote. So, they have to arm wrestle, that would be Doris and President Thatcher, to decide on certain items and approvals that come before the board, how they're going to vote. So, that, of course, leads me to acknowledging President Thatcher and her leadership and contribution. I think, more than anything, I recognize that Deb is a person that has a sight ahead. We've had many a conversation about, what are we doing about, when are we going to talk about, how are we going to sustain our colleges and our services to our communities and our students. So, Deb is not a rear-view mirror person, she's not looking at what did we do that time, she's propelling us and pushing us and her colleagues until to the future, and I for one appreciate that, because I can get really bogged down in the, in the important and urgent issues of the day, rather than thinking about the longer term. So, thank you for that, Deb. And I'm saddened to hear that you've announced your retirement, but I intend to get good use out of you over the next year, so there. For those of you who are less close to the association, as I said, we have thirty-four members, but our primary role is advocacy at the state and federal level on behalf of the seventeen colleges, which means that we don't take an offensive or defensive position on legislation unless the majority of the board members of the colleges support that. And I'm happy to say that the association was created in 1962, and over its fifty-plus, almost sixty-year history, more than sixty, it has always had every college as a member. We've never lost a member, and we're, of course, proud of that, because it's important that we represent the broad nature of Oregon's community colleges. And we have colleges that have fifteen hundred students, and we have colleges that have seventy thousand students, and it's all around finding the common ground and the common beans, and then representing well the institutions with the governor, with business interests, with communities, and of course, with the legislature. In August of last year, the Executive Committee of the association, which has four board members and three presidents, make up that Executive Committee, made a decision that instead of having a one-year set of goals and priorities, they were going to have a six-year set of priorities. I'm a person who likes to have goalposts that are fixed, if you will, that they stay in one place, so that we have a better-than-average chance of accomplishing the results that the board has set for us. And there are three major goals in that plan. One is adequate resources, so that local community colleges can achieve their mission. Nothing's more important. Number two was that the organization itself, the OCCA, membership organization, is efficient and effective at providing services to its membership, and third, that all Oregon community college students are successful. So, we have, those are our guideposts, if you will, and if you are interested, I can share with you, we have about a nine- or ten-page strategic plan that lays out what we're going to do by when. It identifies outcomes for each of the goals and subgoals, but I won't take your time with that. Now, we want to take just a minute to talk about some of the things that we have done as a collective. Back in February, which seems like more than a lifetime ago, we worked with the Hope Center to produce a report about the food, or the, yep, the food and housing insecurity of Oregon's community college students. Astonishing how high the numbers are across the state, the students who are insecure in their, in their food and in their housing, and maybe not incredible, but very worrisome, is that somewhere between fifteen to sixteen percent of our students are actively homeless. So, it provides a laser focus for, it's not just the, it's just, it's not just the delivery of good education that matters, it's also making sure that our students are able, able to learn when they're in, in our classrooms and on our campuses. Some of the other things we did, that we really concentrated on, we added bill that passed in the nineteen legislature that allowed community colleges to provide an applied baccalaureate, and over the last nine to twelve months, there's been a lot of discussion with the Higher Education Coordinating Commission about how to authorize that approval of applied baccalaurates, and the association has been at the table with a pool of community college presidents representing the very best way to do that, so that we have, again, a level playing field for small and large urban and rural colleges to provide that new degree. Another thing is that we have a board policy program where we develop policies that any community college can lift up and customize, that has the depth and breadth policy that are important for the activities of an institution and a board, and we just signed two new colleges to that, bringing our total to ten. Klamath and Southwestern have joined that. We also do, you know, board trainings, and we do an annual conference where we are gathering this year, fingers crossed, at Sun River, and I think our theme will not surprise you. It's going to be about the future of a place-based instruction in community colleges, and what does that bode for us. So, I'm going to stop, because I could go on forever, because we have a lot of balls in the air, but I'd rather stop and see if you have questions for me, or would like for me to add a little more detail to any of the things I've shared.
Anybody else have questions? For Cam, Doris?
No.
You're the most informed among us.
I have no questions. Pretty much been aware of everything that she went over. Did a good job, Cam.
Oh, good, it made your report shorter, didn't it?
Yeah, thank you so much.
So, so, Cam, we know, we've been getting so much news about the economic forecast in Oregon, and how sort of dire it is for the next several years, and then the enrollment decline that's supposed to hit the whole country, though maybe not as bad in Oregon, that certainly will hit. What do you see OCCA's role during that, during the next few years?
Not a good question.
Talking about looking to the?
We are. We benefit from having a group of legislators. Thank you very much for your advocacy there. Legislators and, right now, gubernatorial leadership that understands the essence of the essential role that community colleges play in returning economic vitality to the state. I, I believe that, you know, the governor, we, you may know, or you may know before the days, before your meeting is over, that the governor has invited community colleges to a meeting next Monday, and a great deal of what we want to talk to her, she wants to hear about, you know, how is it going, how's the response to the COVID-19 going, how, how is spring term finishing up? What does summer look like, and what does fall look like? But she also wants information from us about our essential services that we provide to return Oregon to a, a strong economic future. And we are on the front lines of retraining with some really devastating numbers around Oregon's unemployment, and it's really important to note that high school, high school graduates, the difference between the unemployment rate of high school graduates without college and some individuals with college or with college degrees is at least ten, if not fifteen, percent apart. So, it just shows that you can get those jobs right out of high school for, after a couple of years, but you sure can't keep them, and they, and they will not withstand this kind of oppression. So, I think our role in the next several years is to not just make the case, but also to produce those new workers for the new telework, or whatever the, whatever the buzz phrase is going to be for our future. I've heard you say you've got a, an investment firm person, you've got a banker, you've got more than one banker, you've got an insurance person, and much of the work that you all do, just like much of the work that this association does, can be done from a distance. But it doesn't suit everyone. We are hearing from students that they're, they're okay with this if it's a stopgap, they're not okay if this is how they have to think about all of their education. So, there are ways that we can improve our delivery, so that students are more engaged with their learning process, but I do think that our major, the major and most important thing we need to do in the next months and years ahead is to go back to our roots as the, the economic revitalizer of our state and community.
Hey, Cam, I have a quick question for you. So, you have a lot of quick, quick experience. So, how will the budget reduction, you know, how will that be made? Obviously, you know, Ways and Means are the ones that are going to find the approval, but so, does the governor make another budget, and then does she negotiate with the co-chairs? You know, how do you anticipate when? And how will all that actually go down? Who are the key players in the process? Is there any point trying to influence anybody, or?
Well, the answer to the last question is absolutely. Yeah, the decision-makers are the legislative leadership, so that would be Senate President Courtney and Speaker Kotek, and then the Ways and Means tri-chairs, Dan Riefield, Barbara Smith-Warren, and, I just blanked.
That's okay.
That I can hear, Betsy Johnson, I'm sorry. There, there are, there is a vote, I believe that, the rumor is that both Betsy and Barbara Smith-Warren want hold K-12 state funding harmless in a session that is being talked about either at the end of June, the end of July, probably, maybe the end of July. There, there's actually a set of dominoes that I think leadership is waiting to have, to have happen first, and that is, is the federal government, is Congress and the president going to do stimulus four? So, there's, as you all know, there's the HEROES Act that the House has passed. It was, as I think Senator McConnell said, BOA on the, on the Senate side, but they're continuing to work at what might a compromise bill look like for stimulus four. And so, the state is waiting to see if there's a, a state and local injection of funds before the state goes in and makes cut to the existing budget.
Okay.
That, I mean, that's the latest rumors that we have heard, but as, as you probably saw last week, that we actually gained, or our unemployment rate dropped a little, because a couple million people went back to work with the reopening, and there are some in Congress who are saying, see, we don't need another package, another stimulus, because people are going to go back to work. I think it's a little early, my own vantage point's a little early to say that we're on our way to a recovery, especially in Oregon, we tend to be harder hit. We might go in earlier, and we stay longer if previous recessions are any indicators. So, I think it's likely, I mean, the very best news here is that there seems to be an interest in Oregon, in the legislature, to use the ending fund balance and the ready day fund to somewhat mitigate the cuts that would be necessary if we try, if we were just going to take it all in cuts. And so, that's the good news. So, we went from an eight-and-a-half percent cut to a four percent. And I don't for a minute believe the conjecture that we won't receive any reduction. That, that would just, that would break all kinds of precedent and previous experiences in this state. But a four percent is much easier for all of us to balance our budget on than an eight percent.
Okay, thank you. Any last questions? Ready to move on?
Just to remind you, the four percent cut is for the biennial.
That's, that's right.
So, for the coming year, it would be an eight percent cut. That's why that's more, it's more palatable than a sixteen percent cut.
Well, Cam, thank you very much. We appreciate your report, and like I said, we moved you up, so that you don't feel, please don't feel any obligation that you have to continue with this meeting. So, anyway, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you. I'll hang out for a while.
Okay, cool. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Cam. Thank you, thank.
Thanks.
Okay, so the next item is a report from the OCCA rep, Doris, do you have?
I think Cam just gave it, and I also have submitted the written report, and I have no other.
Okay, great, thanks. Dr. Thatcher, President's Report is next.
So, my first question is, have you had a chance to see it, because it did get posted to you this morning? So, just in summary, you know, we have a reopening committee that's working, we're awaiting the next executive order from the governor, and so, as well as directions from the OHA, but we have a lot of work that we're doing now, and Kelly is the chair of our committee that's doing that work. I kind of gave you that summary of the budget and how we achieved the $2.6 million in reductions, and have in the back pocket more reductions if we need to, to go to the associations for furloughs and so forth. We, we did get, the two sets of feedback from students, which was really cool, to get it from the Canvas, the actual system that we use for our course delivery, as well as the national survey, and they were pretty consistent in what they did. Basically, we give them a lot of great support, but it's mixed reviews on the actual education that they're getting, because it's just not working for some students. But both, both surveys also ask about these other challenges, both in your personal lives, in terms of your food, your family and that kind of stuff, as well as your access to technology. And about a third of our students are, are dealing with the access issue, and most of the students are dealing with some other kind of stress, whether it's just being at home and stuck with your family, or, or not having your job, or how do you get all this work done? There's the restructuring that we've done of academics. I love what Dr. Crabtree has led in terms of how we rethought and consolidated, and now we're have, I think one of the beauties you'll see in this, that I really didn't talk about in the report, is that you no longer have CTE over here, career technical ed, and then arts and sciences transfer over here. If you look at that, it's not like that anymore. Those are blended, and so, they're blended by content. A lot of CTE programs actually transfer, forestry transfers, nursing transfers, all of these things that aren't just limited to certificates and associate degrees, and, and to have a division of STEM to put all those people together. There are going to be some really robust conversations, and I think, as you can see in one of her criteria for creating this, was where is this going to take us? By putting people together and thinking about things differently, we hope we can generate new ideas for programs that want to meet community needs and be forward-thinking instead of thinking of that. We'll give you more details in September. We're still filling those division chair positions. I gave you the capital projects we're working on. There's enough updates, you'll see a little bit more information on the Ten One Memorial, Victory Builders is in Victory Builders is indeed doing it and doing all aspects, the memorial site itself, as well as the widening of the fire lane, the ADA access and the pathway down to it. So that will be done, I said by October 1st, it should be done in August. You'll see our enrollment there. We're finishing the term down and credit hours about seventeen percent and total reversible FTE close to sixteen percent. Those are our two revenue streams. And so those are a great concern to us. Summer's looking great, but summer la, the week before looked much better than this. So the numbers are starting to flatten. And we know not to get too excited too soon. We have four weeks yet to go before summer term starts. So we don't start until after the Fourth of July for summer term. At the same time, we're down forty percent for fall, but again, that's really early. Our students are known for registering very late and in these times, you can see how people may be waiting. So we continue, you'll hear from Missy about some of the things we're doing to bring people in. But hope you can join us at commencement this week for our drive-through commencement. We have a nursing penning next week that's going to be outside at the Douglas County Museum and, and like, so they'll be in their cars, a couple more things that we haven't done yet. Our award ceremony for employees will be by Zoom on Monday, so if you want to chime in, please do. And that's about it.
I have a question. You talked about the student survey and, and the results, but can you give us an idea of how many students replied to the survey?
I think it was a couple hundred for each one of them. Yeah, so you know, it's, which for us is actually pretty good. I'm trying to think what our actual enrollment is, but it's, it's enough to be statistically significant. We also just finished two more surveys, but those were, those are part of our strategic plan assessment processes. We did all employees and all students and surveyed them about a number of things on campus. Couple of questions in there about COVID-19, but in general, it's the questions we would ask every year on campus. But those, those we'll share later as we talk about our strategic plan assessment for the year. They'll be ready this fall.
Hey, just, if you would please give us like a, the commencement is Friday. And it starts at?
Well, the, the, the students will start gathering in the parking lot down here at five o'clock. By about a quarter or six, they'll probably be lined up. At a quarter or six, the Uncle Singers will do a couple of songs for us. The actual ceremony will start at six, where I will welcome people, deliver about a five-minute talk, and then we'll start the procession. And someone will, Missy will, Dean, Dean Olson, Missy will be standing there reading out names of people. We might have, each person's only allowed one car, or we know that some cars will have multiple people in them. This is both certificate, associate degree students as well as GED students. I don't know right now where we're standing with cars. Everybody won't, they won't, they won't participate, but you know, if we have seventy-five or a hundred, we'll be really excited.
So what, what about the board? What?
So as the cars come through, we need, the board hands the covers, so we'll have at least, and you may want to switch out instead of standing the whole time. We'll have one on one side of the cars and one on the other because we don't know which side the graduate will be on. So whoever sticks their hand out the window, that's who gets, gets the diploma cover. And then, so if we only have two people that come, you have to stand there the whole time, I guess, or if more than two can come, then you can switch out and take.
I'll be there.
You're in?
I'll be there.
So we have to.
So what are we wearing?
You are not wearing regalia. I will be in regalia just because Chase told me I had to be in regalia. The students do have their regalia. We fully anticipate them to be all decorated, as well as their vehicles. We're hoping actually that they will make it a rather festive occasion. But I'm not going to tell you what to wear. You get to decide.
I still have my cabin gear. And it's baby blue.
Baby blue, that would be really cute. To patch your eyes, I don't know. So does that, Steve will do his, his thing at the end where he, after everyone's driven off, he'll say, now, by the power invested in it, flicker tassels. And I'm sure it'll be crazy. It'll be live, it'll be live on radio, livestream, so every, you know, people will at least hear you, even though students may be gone by the time we make our closing remarks.
And how many board members do you have right now, Steve, that are going to be there?
Three.
Oh.
One, two, three.
Five.
Four.
David's going to be there. One, two, three, four, five.
It's a party.
Guy?
Guy's not going to be able to weigh in either.
What about Randy? Randy?
Practice.
Steve there?
Oh, he's going to be here. We have all kinds.
No.
It's up to you, Doris. Well, he's not going to be. Do you have, what are the grades? Do we have like, are we set up at the?
We did, we did ask to put up a, a tenth there. So we, I need to double check and be sure they're doing that. I wanted it up for sun, for protection from the sun. We'll have, it's going to be sixty-two. Yeah, maybe not bad. But it's good. It could be really nice.
There's a fifty percent chance of rain.
It's up to seventy percent.
Oh, it's seventy percent.
Really?
It's what weather.com says.
Wow.
Well, boats are allowed, one boat. Okay.
We'll have umbrellas.
Feel free to come if you don't, it's, I think we're good, we're covered, so. Okay, let's see. So we talked about, Dr. Thatcher, you mentioned the nursing penning is, that's going to be outside of the Douglas County Museum.
On the nineteenth.
Okay. And we don't know about the dental penning?
That's, they need to finish their clinicals because they, that was one of the ones that had to wait because dentist offices were closed.
And did the police reserve academy, did their training get?
They have to finish this summer too. They'll be finishing up their, their year-long program this summer.
All right, good deal. Any other questions for Dr. Thatcher? Okay, let's move on to our agenda then. Next, we have some informational reports and accreditation report, which was posted on the web or in our board packet, and I can't remember which one.
On the web.
On the web. So I don't know that Dr. Crabtree is here, are any questions?
No, I think the big thing there is next Monday and Tuesday is the biggest event in terms of getting ready for accreditation, and that's the program review by faculty. So they have two solid days of doing assessment and they'll have their reports done by the beginning of the day. And then a lot of this work this summer is getting the report written. So we're pretty excited about that.
Okay, good deal. Okay, enrollment report. We do have Dean Olson with us, who's joined us by Zoom. Hi, Missy.
Hi.
And so, I'm not sure I want to do this, the, the enrollment reports were included in our board packet and I asked Missy to come and, you know, it's, this is probably a fair question, but to do our best to try to answer the so what question, you know, which is like, we've got all this data that we've looked at that's in our report and how, how do we, how does the college think about that data that we get, you know, every other week now, I think it is? What, how do we act on that? What is our, you know, what can we learn from the data and what can we be doing differently to try to improve recruitment, retention? So, Missy, thank you very much for joining us. The floor is yours.
So we're definitely been thinking through, and I think I would split the data into two things. As, you know, Dr. Thatcher just mentioned, spring term was very unique and we're still going to be recovering from that and from the fact that what was amazing, if you want to win from spring term, is that our faculty did an amazing job very quickly converting hundreds of classes to online format. And so that has been amazing and outstanding. And we really didn't lose too many students in some of those lower division transfer courses. It's really, the effect has been on the career and technical side, that we couldn't offer the classes that need to be done in person. Unfortunately, some of our dual credit relationships, our high schools decided that they could not deliver the content based on how the high schools were delivering their end of the year. And CWT unfortunately was not able to offer a number of their courses as well. So really great on the ones we were able to convert and moving forward, how to continue to make those quality, because we are looking a little longer term and moving this into summer and/or fall for all the classes that need to remain online as we wait for the full guidance and as we slowly start to move back those that can be resuming in person, such as our welding. I saw the dental assisting students outside my office today, so that was exciting as well. So we're really kind of working through the whole COVID-19 component and how we're serving students. The other thing I'd like to add on that is some outstanding work was done from our support services to really move things like advising online. So they're doing appointments via Zoom, phone, email. Our enrollment advisors and Jessica with recruiting have really been moving forwards, doing virtual Q and As so that students can still explore our programs and our campus and just do it virtually. So some really creative thinking there and some ways that everybody is really working together to implement some practices that we need to carry forward and continue offering in the future. So all of these virtual experiences, we will continue to do and they'll be available to students. To do with the overall enrollment reports prior to spring term, you know, we definitely were seeing that decline. We are working on kind of a collaborative effort to really look at how we can kind of onboard more efficiently. We're working through our guided pathways work where we're going to streamline the choices students have into very clear houses, we call them, so choice areas. And we'll have our application and our advising appointments match those. That work will help with more personalized outreach from certain people that will really target what the student wants and help them successfully transfer or complete their degree here, depending on their goal. For recruiting, we will continue to do the creative, you know, virtual, as I said. We look forward to having on-campus events again. We unfortunately missed out on spring advising in our high schools, which is always a fabulous time to connect with those transitioning seniors. But we've been personally reaching out to every single one of them and scheduling appointments and getting them registered through one-on-one. The response rate has been outstanding for like quick turnaround. So if students get the outreach, they immediately do the online orientation and then they're ready to get scheduled with their advisor. So that's happening in kind of a quicker process because we're doing that personalized outreach with each student. So that's, there's some promising practices there that we'll definitely continue moving forward. And then it's really that overall handoff. We have onboarding, we have academic advising, and we have faculty advising now. And so we're really working through those processes, how we can streamline them and how we can better make sure that every student gets that personal touch and feels confident that they're getting the advice they need and that they're on the path that they, that will help them be successful. So we're continuing to work on those efforts as we move forward. I don't know if I answered the question, but that is the stuff we're working on.
All right, good deal. Any questions for Missy?
Nice job.
There's some really good people doing good work.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for all your work, Missy. And thank you very much. We're looking forward to when we can actually go back in the student center and meet with an enrollment advisor. Hopefully, we'll get the direction in just a couple days on that, huh?
We did open the testing center with, following some very strict protocol, so it's been nice to bring back GE testing. We're hopefully bring back some industry certifications and now some placement testing can occur in person as well. So we're getting there.
Okay, good deal. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time tonight and appreciate your report, so.
Thank you.
Okay, good deal. So let's move on to the first item under old business, which is the reduction in force. So the green sheet, this is an action item. Okay, so, Robin, oh, we can't show that, can we? Yeah, we have a little glitch in our system. So let me read you the green sheet then, I got it right here. So this is an action item. The subject is implementation of reduction in force. And the reason it says implementation, if you recall last, at our last board meeting, we discussed reduction in force. So I can say this is an action item. It reads as follows, "Due to financial considerations caused by the impact of COVID-19 and after having exhausted all other avenues, board approval is requested for implementation of the reduction in force plan." So and it's recommended by Kelly Pluird, our HR director, who's with us, and approved by Dr. Thatcher. So Kelly's with us. I kind of just like stole your. So Kelly, go ahead, if you have any comments for the, about the?
Chairlessly, members of the Board of Education from Quack Community College and Dr. Thatcher and Kelly Pluird, Director of Human Resources for the college. And due to the negative impact of COVID-19 on the state economy, which will result in a major reduction in our state allocation and with anticipated enrollment decline. And at last month's board meeting, the college requested approval to plan a reduction in force. As a representative of the college, I'm here to request, request the approval for implementation of the college's reduction in force plan.
Okay, good deal. Any questions for Kelly? Motion would be certainly in order.
Since it's an action item, I would move that the board approves the request for implementation of the reduction in force plan.
I'll hold my nose in second.
Okay, so Doris has moved, David's second, to implement the reduction in force plan. Is there any discussion? Are you all?
I.
Oh, since you're going to ask that something. All those in favor of implementing the reduction in force plan, think about by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, this is, you know, just a general comment now, this is really on behalf of the entire Board of Education, that, you know, it's a really difficult year for all of us with the big decline in enrollment and then the anticipated reduction in funding from the state. And, you know, we're very sensitive to, these are real people that are, when we talk about reduction in force, it's not abstract. These are real people that have served our college for often a number of years. And, you know, it's really with a lot of sadness that we have to vote to approve to do this. And we're, you know, we're real sensitive to that and, you know, it's just really, like I say, it's really sad that we have to take action like this. So it's not anything that, you know, we consider lightly. Okay, so let's move on. At Mr. Richardson's request, we're going to pull out the copier contract from the consent agenda, so let's hop over to the consent agenda and find the copier contract. Do you have it there, Robin?
I do.
Okay, so, good deal. I don't seem to have it from here. Okay, so. So we've got Natalia on the, okay, so this is an action item and I'll just quickly summarize it. Says the college is requesting the board to approve entering into a contract with Kelly Connect. The total amount of the college, or the total amount of the overlay is $430,000, which is a, it's a five-year contract. And then it just discusses the process that we went through and the savings over the current contract. So any, like, discussion? Comments? Motion? Then we're going to make a motion.
Is Randy still there?
Yes, sorry, it's on mute. So just, my-
So just, my, my comment on it is just, given the fact where we're at, I think there's a good opportunity for us to look at other options before, you know, looking into a, you know, five-year contract with the six-figure dollar now attached to it. That's just my take. I'm not sure if anyone else has opinions on it.
Could you, could you explain what you mean by other options?
Well, just looking at everything, techno, you know, with way technology is now maybe, you know, a way of being more efficient and conservative.
Natalia, do you know when the current contract expires?
We would like to enter into this contract effective July. Our existing contract is through August, but it costs us basically $13,600 a month. So if we wait beyond July, we will be losing about $7,400 a month. I would also mention, Ed, that the college looked into other possibilities and technology. I'm not aware of other things that are available on the table for the college to operate at the moment. So I'm not sure that we would have other options available for the college to utilize.
Could you address why five years instead of three years or two years?
I think the saving, so my understanding is that the five-year contract, so it's, it provides the ultimate savings over those five years. If we try to reduce that to three, the, this whole cost basically will, will, will lose the savings. Well, basically the cost of this whole contract will just live into three years. So it's not gonna save us anything if we reduce the, that duration.
What if we get three years into it and the technology has changed so quickly that the equipment they provided us is now outdated?
I am not sure what happens in that situation. I know that they replace their units, uh, if we, so I'm not sure.
I think that was probably one of my concerns is that how do we know for sure what we're going to need five years from now? And do we want to really invest that much money in an unknown?
I still agree. I'm very careful about this because I don't want to come across mean here, but I mean, the technology cycle is radically changing and we're dealing with potentially reinventing a lot of the way the college operates. A five-year contract on what still, I will say, appears to be legacy technology bothers me.
Agreed.
What are our options?
I'm not sure that I have the options. The information technology would have to be consulted on that, and I believe they were, they, the whole campus was, including faculty.
I wonder if we could have less machines on campus or have more, you know, a few high-end machines and then.
We have been reducing the fleet and I believe this one has already had some reductions in the fleet. I believe the Kelly, basically company is very flexible and they will work with us on the technology changes if that arises, including if we need to eliminate certain machines off of the campus.
So can we write that into the contract, a clause indicating that the, you know, type of adjustments that could be made to it?
Uh, we can try. I will have to see what, they will have to agree to it, so.
I don't, I don't know how to handle this because to me, this is a really high-level summary about a lot of equipment that has a lot of elements at play that, you know, it's like just doing this and saying, will you let us spend the money? On, on what? The proposal does, I mean, I, I know it's less than it used to be. I know there are fewer machines. I know it's, the contract's more competitive than it was, but I also know it has to be because this is legacy technology. They're trying to hang on to business right now, so they have to price it appropriately.
So we've consulted the information technology, I believe, team, the Director of Information Technology, Tim Hill, is in full agreement that at this time, we don't have any other technology for the campus to implement or ready for it.
I'm just not crazy about handcuffing ourselves for five years and handcuffing incoming president, too.
Yeah. At the last meeting, we all talked about how uncomfortable we felt and that this appeared to be, you know, excuse the harshness, but tone deaf to the current situation. Was there any further exploration to possible alternatives between then?
Well, I believe there were conversations with information technology. This is a large campus. Faculty relies on this technology heavily at the moment. The contract does allow us full flexibility to swap and move equipment. And there's a, so I believe Jules will tell me there's a clause that lets us out, but I'm not sure what that means. It's actually, it would cost us money to let us out of the contract or not.
That feels like a very important piece of information.
This is what I'm asking Jules, so he'll, hopefully he'll answer this question for me.
I think the hard part is because five years is a very long time and we've seen how much changes in the last six months. And looking at it from a private sector, it's hard to fathom, you know, $8,000 a month or $7,000 a month or whatever it is. We, I mean, how many machines could we buy? I mean, I get that there's a lot more to it that goes into that, but I think that's the hard part for me to try to wrap my head around, so.
So Dr. Thatcher, I have a question about this because I realize that there's a certain element of urgency where Jim want to start this pretty quickly because of savings. I can't help but find myself wanting to hear from I T about what their recommendations are. It seems like there's, we're not able to hear this right now. It's a, well, everybody discussed it. This is what we decided. So what was the discussion? Who cares? This is what we decided. I want to hear the discussion and I kind of want to know if we're handcuffing our I T department with this contract as well.
Why, what do you mean?
Well, I, I, you know, so we, when, when Tim was hired, he's come in and looked at all the technology that's involved in the college. He's expressed the desire to help the college sort of move into the next generation of education. I want to make sure that we're not saddling him with the contract that's going to prevent him from being able to be flexible in I T. So I'd like to get his opinion on the contract.
Well, she did indicate he'd talked to Tim and that this was the best option at this time. I mean, Tim just presented to us today his, his vision based on faculty input about what we need to be doing for technology for instruction. There's not, this isn't a technology for instruction. This is, you know, backdoor support kind of stuff from the faculty point of view. But there's so many operations that we do that currently we rely on this. We're not talking about copy machines. We're talking about this multi-function machine. So they're doing a lot more than that. The scanning is, is probably one of the most important pieces of what we do. Did you get the information from Jules?
If you think that basically we can be given out of the contract, so there's no penalty on getting out of the contract if, if there's something, if we need to. Also, I wanted to add, I T was, so this, this was handled by a committee that involved I T in it. So the copier selection team and their review included I T team in it. And I believe Tim is in full support of proceeding with this.
Yeah, decisions made by committee on this campus concern me frankly.
Well, the committee would be made up of people that are knowledgeable about what needs to be done, not by random appointments of people. So I'm not sure what you mean by, by that. It's also a requirement of how we operate. We're required to have input from multiple constituents in the decision-making that we do on campus.
And the process took them, they were involved in this process for nine months. So it wasn't a last-minute decision. So it was, they have been working on this for about nine months. They had involved multiple consist, consistent, consistent, sorry, I cannot even talk out of it, on campus and some multiple groups. I T was part of the committee and I T director was involved and asked basically about this process.
So you, you indicated that you think that at any time we could get out of the contract without a penalty?
That's what Jules had told me, communicated with me. I, I'm not sure that, like, as far as the contract itself. So, sorry. The I T director and network administrator were fully involved in this process as well. The, yes, per Jules, we can get out of the contract if we basically, if there's some financial issues or something else.
At any time with no cost to us? And they have to come here and collect the.
That's insufficiently vague for my comfort.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I'm not comfortable to say that it's without cost because I need to see that full contract.
Because I think, yeah, because five-year, I mean, is there, is it five years, just a price locked in for five years? Which I could see that, then you could get out necessarily, but if it's you can get out, but if you pay half again what's left or, I mean, I've, I've seen all kinds of contracts.
That's how I would interpret it. So because to me, if this cost is locked in a five-year contract, then that's the savings it provides. So I'm not sure that we can just easily get out without any extra cost unless we are under some kind of exigency, exigency or other financial burden.
Okay, so board, what do we want to do with this? We can vote up or down to approve, not approve. We can recommend, we can like move something else that we, information we want or recommend to dig the contract or do research or.
If we vote not to approve, what happens? What's the next step?
Is the equipment we have right now not efficient? Is that the, I mean, our, what's, what's the reasoning why we went to this procedure?
We're using the equipment. It's not the newest equipment, but it's gonna cost us seventy, seventy, $6,400 more per month if we will keep it.
Okay, so what, they're gonna come and get it then if we, we okay this contract? They just come get all their stuff? It's there now?
Yes.
Good.
I like the fact that this is savings and everything else. I just don't know where we're gonna be five years from now is the hard part and with everything else going on.
I think it's too long, in my opinion.
So I've heard a couple of people here say that this contract is just, they, they feel it's too long. Yeah, another option would be to ask the college to bring us a shorter contract, you know, and we can figure out how to get this thing approved. Or at least look at it.
I would be okay with having another, an interim meeting or something.
And we could do it by Zoom and, you know, like noon time or something.
I, I just think that that's, because I get that, you know, you build in the savings on a five-year contract, you might, maybe you're paying $8,000 a year and if you only do a three-year contract, then you're paying $10,000 a year based on what they're doing it. But what's gonna change between now and five years from now? I mean.
So my understanding that they are, if, if technology changes, they're fairly flexible and switching our technology in this five-year contract.
But if the price of technology drops substantially, that's not, we're already locked in to pay more. So I, I mean, I get there's, it's, you know, we lock in guarantee and it, you know, the savings, maybe it is way less five years from now, but if you average it out, you know, cost averaging, it makes sense. I, I don't know exactly, but.
Okay, so I've heard a couple of people suggest they're willing to like meet again. They'd like to look at a shorter timeframe.
I liked what David said about getting more information from I T. I, I questioned the, the validity of all these machines in an environment where we're not all necessarily going to be working, you know, staff's not all going to be working from this place. And it's a whole new world that we're going into and it feels really uncomfortable to be talking about a reduction in force in the same conversation as we're talking about investing a whole lot of money in inanimate objects that may or may not actually be useful.
So, well, Eric has once again, you know, echoed what David said about the importance of I T in the conversation and the, you know, just to give everybody just a tiny bit of a background where that comes from. In a corporate environment of similar size to the college, there would typically be maybe one or two really large printers on campus that there would be like a, you know, central print server. And then there would be some very expensive printers, you know, multi-function devices that maybe one for building distributor on campus. And then people would use a robust filing system to, for all the document management and just get away from these kinds of expenses. That's why this is, you know, like David said, a legacy cost. And so the importance of I T in the conversation is to understand, you know, where the college is in terms of having the, you know, really the software and the infrastructure and, and then also, of course, all the training that has to go along with that. But, you know, in the kind of world we live in now, it's so distributed where people are, you know, encouraged to work from home and deliver classes from home. And it looks like that could be the trend that will continue for some time now. You know, I think it's worth asking if the way that we're doing this is, you know, really we're just doing what we've always done or if there is a way to be more efficient. And, you know, I know that the college put a lot of thought into this, but they didn't, they put a lot of thought into a different period of time than today. Nine months ago, we didn't have COVID when they were trying to win this. So board, let's come up with a plan so we can move on. What do we, what's the pleasure of the board? If we want to, let's, do we want, what, what do we want to ask the, what do you want to ask the college to do? You know, somebody give me something to work with.
This is an action item. Do we first need to vote on not approving it?
We don't really have, we can just, we can just ask the college, rather than act. We can ask the college whatever we want to ask. We can ask them to, we can, we can go ahead and move to approve it. We can, we can ask them to bring us more information for another meeting. We can try to give parameters about what we'd like to see and more information in another meeting. Somebody like give us something that I'd want to like put my idea.
I, I would like to see numbers on shorter contracts for one and then.
What's a comfortable length of time? I've heard in, I think in our last meeting, they mentioned three years. Is that?
I would say no more.
No more than three years. Okay, Erica, you, you put them up, but just what would you like to see?
I definitely want to see more information about the cancellation. I think that's important to let me know exactly what.
Okay.
How we can get out of there exactly and how much it will cost or not cost.
I would also like to at least hear about what exploration was done for alternatives or, you know, more, you know, current technology that doesn't involve, you know, we talked about desktop scanners and that sort of stuff that you can get for, for less money. How feasible is that? Is, does that exist in a way that can be useful to the staff, especially in light of the likelihood that there will be less staff on campus? Especially in light, you know, of the likelihood that there will be less staff on campus. And, um, you know, I'd like to see that some thought is put into what the actual usage would be, the actual need for physical maintenance. I, I just don't want to be spending money every month to pay for machines that sit in empty buildings.
Okay, so it sounds like we want to hear a shorter contract, if there's a, what the, um, the cost is to terminate the contract, what the, that looks like. And then, um, some more discussion, uh, from the college about changing environment and can we do things differently? And do we have the backend infrastructure so that we can really move more aggressively to scanning instead of printing? And if there's ways that, you know, we can just, um, do things differently to try to, to reduce the cost of this, is really, really bottom line. So is, is that the consensus of board? Doris?
Yes.
Guy, I know you're on board. You're obviously sitting where it's while you are David is. Randy, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. So, um, so, um, just so we have a, make sure we have the timeframe. So Natalia, we've, um, we've got, you know, this is, um, step aside, one more thing, and this, it just seems, um, the, the equipment that's on here, when they come and all this stuff off, they're gonna just, like, what will they do with a guy? Do they just?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, that maybe we should say, what, what happens if we just leave what we got? I can't imagine they're gonna say, we want to just take it all off and throw it away, because that's what they're gonna do with it.
So what if, what if we ask the global vendor?
Yeah.
Give us a price to maintain this stuff for one more year.
Yep.
And here's what we have to pay if we get new stuff. So if your junk is, like, you can, you know, give us a one-year shot on our existing equipment.
Which would give us a lot more time to really explore.
Yeah, we'll know what the world, we don't know what the world is gonna look like next year, but... I just, for some reason, I just can't think we could get, like, a one-year deal on our, their current equipment that we have, no more than we're using it. And that would be even more competitive than what we're gonna get over a five-year contract for...
I, I think it's hard, because this is just kind of the way it's always been done kind of thing, and I think that it, but we have to start looking at different ways to do stuff.
I, if I could add, so my understanding is the current vendor would be happy to keep this for all of the months, but it's costing us sixty-four hundred more per month. So they're not willing to reduce anything. They're very, basically, um, they told us that we can expand it, but it's gonna cost us the same, that's what we think, so we won't realize any savings.
So then?
I do want to add also that, um, the committee did, uh, review the centralized, um, machines as well, and that proposal was rejected through the review. Because they do have, um, they have, um, the, um, basically involved in us multiple divisions and departments in this, as well as IT and the maintenance. So if we are maintaining ourselves, I don't believe, um, IT was very excited about maintaining our machines. Maintenance is included in, in this current contract.
If you brought this to us, you know, four months ago, would be a no-brainer, but it's, it's just so different now.
Okay, well, so I'll work with the college, just work with Dr. Thatcher, and we'll get another, um, meeting, be more information, and we'll bring this back up. We'll have another meeting sometime before too long. In time to, you know, stay ahead of contract, July, right? Isn't that what she said, end of July?
Yeah, July.
Okay.
Contract things and obvious, I'll do it in July.
Yep.
I'm not, I'm shocked that they would try to play hardball with that.
Me too. I can't believe they would.
I, I'm really curious about that, because, um, you know, here's what we're willing to pay, or we replace you. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be saying, hey, what does it take? Just say, we're gonna pay this, and either you're gonna say yes, or you're gonna come get your equipment on this date.
But it's a different contract, though, not the same vendor.
Ah, the same vendor. I mean, people won't be keeping it.
Be happy to keep us for the same price.
Well, who truly would?
Yeah. This, this is like negotiating with tenants when the price per square foot's dropped all over town because there's vacancies. There's gonna be accommodation. Nobody wants to lose business in this fragile economy.
Well, and how old are the machines? Like, if they come collect them, what are they gonna do with them? They're gonna put them in a warehouse and hope that maybe they can sell them to somebody sometime, so they're not really motivated to come get them.
I, I agree. I think we're in a position of strength from a negotiation perspective.
So I'll also help convey that to the college, okay?
But more candidly, uh, you know, here's what concerns me about decision by committee. Okay, we, we've looked, and I'm just gonna talk about the elephant in the room for a second. A lot of people in committee have been very resistant to change on this campus, and the board has said, change is not optional because the world is changing around us. We have to be willing to adapt. And so when you say the committee made a decision, I want to know that the committee made a decision in opposition to recommendation from IT or in cooperation with IT? And with IT not being represented or being silenced by committee, that concerns me. As a board member, I want to know these details.
You're not gonna silence Tim.
But I'm not hearing from him.
Well, I would definitely to bring the IT over where I live the meeting is.
Okay, well, I mean, because I want to know how the technology is gonna help the college advance into the next generation of education, especially in light of what's going on right now, because it seems like we are, you know, throwing an anchor into the past and hoping that it continues to work.
But if we didn't have printers all together, what would happen? Just saying.
There actually is a, there is an answer to that. That's important.
I don't think we can do that.
Well, I know, but I'm just, but I think, because it feels, it feels yucky. It feels, it's like, what's the extreme of that? And then kind of working backwards a little bit.
Because six months ago, we would have never done a board meeting by Zoom. And here we are. And now we're streaming it live on Facebook and YouTube. So necessity breeds invention.
Okay. Let's move back on to our agenda. So we're on to, like, let's see, the next item. Are we, are we ready for the first item under new business? First ingredient policies. Okay, so let's jump over to the first ingredient policies. Um, that's in a separate document, Robin. Oh, you got it right there. Okay. So, um, could you please scroll down to page 11?
Okay, I'll need this. I'll need to open up the ones just a minute.
Okay, right there. Okay, so this is, um, we've had some discussion about the facility used in the past, and I just want to make sure people are aware of this policy and then the associated procedure that, first reading in case we have any comments we want to offer about the, uh, facility use. So as far as the procedure goes, it's, um, on page 14. So do you have comments you want to make, Dr. Thatcher, about the policy? If anybody has questions or comments, Dr. Thatcher, um, discuss them with us. So just a couple of things, I'll just call them out to you to make sure you're aware of them. You know, the Southern Oregon Wine Institute has the first right of refusal for all alcohol served on campus. In terms of anything that's, um, college can't discriminate against who would use the facility. The, of course, there, if it concerns free speech, there's another board policy that that, uh, references. Uh, the vendor has to, um, choose for their catering, uh, from the current list of approved vendors. And I believe there's a thirty-day, um, minimum notice for use of facility. Those are the highlights, at least that jumped out at me. So any comments or discussion about the, either this policy or anything else that's included in this? No? No? Guy, I saw you drink your head. It's wild with David.
No, I, I think that this is gonna be community responsive is the thing. You know, if, if the policy looks reasonable to me, fairly communicated, it's been adapted along the way. Uh, you know, we've talked about catering in the past. We've talked about right of fresh refusal for alcohol and who gets to use it. So none of this is new or surprising. It'll just be interesting to see what kind of feedback we get from people in terms of their interaction with us. Because that's mostly where the community squawks, is when, they say, well, we tried to do something, and then we were met with X, and then we, as board members, find ourselves on our heels going, okay, we'll do it. We'll talk to somebody or, I don't know. But I, I, there's nothing that jumps out at me as problematic.
Okay, good deal. So this is a, just strictly information. We'll wrap it up then for new business. The last item on our agenda is organization for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And we could do this in July, but probably go ahead and add this at the end of the meeting today. So that we, this way, we will not have to have a formal July for new.
I move to appoint you again, chairman.
Point, I think we have to vote.
Oh. Yeah, I do nominate first.
Well, if there are no women nominations, do you just get to, you have to vote?
I think we're still supposed to vote, aren't we?
I don't know.
Can I ask Robin these questions?
You're supposed to vote.
Yeah.
We're supposed to vote.
Because you voted for the year last, last year you voted for this year, so we have a new year that we have to...
Are there term limits?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Are there term limits?
No.
So Guy nominated Steve. I will second that nomination.
Okay, so are there any other nominations for the chair?
You're lovely.
Are you gonna nominate somebody? Okay, so it looks like I have been nominated and I'll be chair, so let's go on to the...
So we'll vote it.
Everybody in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
And thank you, by the way. Thank you for your job.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hold on, just...
I would be horrible compared to you, so.
I got so embarrassed. Okay, let's do the election of the vice chair.
I nominate Guy.
Well, I'll second it. I don't want to jive.
Okay, so it looks like, um, all those in favor of Guy for our vice chair?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Guy. Hi, Guy. So I'd like to nominate, appoint Doris, please, yes, for our OCS seat.
Second.
That will win this.
Well, there's no turning back now, Doris.
It's a very rewarding experience. You get to learn a lot about the Oregon community college system. And are you sure there isn't anyone else who wants to take advantage of that? I mean, I'm more than happy to do it, but I don't want to hog the position. If someone else wants that opportunity...
It's four times a year, right? Your meetings are quarterly?
Right, plus the things like the conference that we go to in November and, um, and then serving on committees. I serve on a couple of the committees, um, membership committee and, um, nominating committee and some of those things.
I want to learn more, but right now I don't feel like that I can put my, put extra time into it, and I don't feel like I would do it service, so. I, I just, and I don't think that's fair.
No. David? Well, we've gone that route.
We tried that once before.
I am delighted that you are still, and you're very gracious about it, but I would, I think, I know everybody here, you do a great job, and I'm really pleased and proud to have you to represent the college, and I hope you'll keep doing it.
Okay, I will accept them.
Yeah, thank you. Gosh, it's, it's very time-consuming. You just do a wonderful job, Doris, so...
And they all like you, too. They wouldn't like me. They like you.
All right, good deal. So, um, we've got our slate, uh...
Do we need the board on that one?
Yeah.
Hi. Our host. Okay, so...
Sorry, we have to take a roll now, so we just want to jive.
That's fine.
Any concluding comments from the board?
I just want to say, and for, um, like Natalia and whoever's listening to, it's, there's a lot of hard stuff that we're trying to do, and I know that, I don't think, not any of us are taking this lightly, so, and I know we've had some hard conversations, but I think we can come together and get some really good things happening, so.
Yeah, I'm excited about this. Um, you know, as unfortunate as COVID is, it presents a really fantastic opportunity for us to think outside of the box in a way that we never would have if we weren't faced with this challenge. So I think, you know, if we can look at it in that positive light of, you know, providing education in a bold new way that will help propel the college into the future and really taking advantage of that opportunity to get a foothold in that, you know, that change, and rather than kind of being dragged along reluctantly.
Yeah, well put. Very well put. Yeah, exceptional. That is the mantra. That has to be our mantra for the college.
Yeah, intentionally propelling to future.
Yeah, excellent. Anything else? We'll quit on that very positive note. Intentional about the future. So seeing no other comments, the, uh, meeting is adjourned. We'll see those of you with your umbrellas and raincoats Friday night.
I'll be there.
And those that joined by...
At least an umbrella.
You too?